For life.
Thank you.
I think if you pick them up, you get to keep them.
There we go.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 17th, 2024. Would you please stand for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, as we go through this Christmas season, help us all to continuously be mindful of the wonderful gift that you gave us in Jesus. Help us to put our best efforts forward to serve the citizens of this county, making it a better place, a healthier place for us to all live. Again, be with us during Christmas. Help us remember the spirit and the underlying meaning behind the great wonderful gift that you gave us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton?
Present.
Campbell?
Here.
Doster?
What is it?
Getty?
Here.
Hatfield?
Here.
Smoker?
Here.
Tunisson?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Thank you. Reports from state and county officials. Do we have any state or county officials with us this morning that would like to address or update the board? Going one. Limited public comment at this time and a member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Christina Bush, Maple Grove Township. I wanted to give a heads up and also an invitation regarding a remembrance walk that I am pulling together in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January 20th. The timing will be 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and whoever gathers will be walking on the sidewalk around the courthouse. I encourage those who want to participate to bring signs with quotes from Dr. King and other civil rights activists. I have spoken with the Berry County Administrator's Office and with the Hastings City Chief of Police to make sure I have any necessary paperwork taken care of and have been informed since the activity is on the sidewalk and not on the lawn or building steps that a permit is not necessary. At this time, I do not know how many participants to expect. To help estimate a head count, there will be an ad in the reminder about the walk in early January with a QR code for signing up. The ad will also be posted in local social media groups. I will get that estimated head count to the county and city officials several days before the walk. In the event that weather does not make the activity an attractive event, we will cancel the event for that day and might look at another date. If you need contact information from me, I can leave that with the appropriate person. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Additional public comment? Hearing none. We will move ahead with our agenda. Approval of the written agenda. At this time, any member of the board may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda or placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such requests. Does any commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such requests. The agenda is approved as written. Various correspondents? Does any commissioner have correspondence they would like to share with the board? Okay.
Mr. Chair, there was an email I think I received and I think everybody else did regarding the sound two meetings ago. I don't know if that's has been corrected or addressed. Okay.
And we are continuing to check that. I know our YouTube feed sometimes is not as reliable as our older system is, but we're going to continue to work on that and hopefully update the system entirely next year. So. Consent agenda. Commissioner Tunisson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A, approval of December 3rd, 2024 Committee of the Hall Meeting Minutes. Item B, approval of December 10th, 2024 Board of Commissioner Meeting Minutes.
Is there support?
Or.
Motion by Tunisson, support by Hatfield. For all items listed on the consent agenda, discussion is not allowed and a roll call bill is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisson?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Presentations, we have none this morning. Public hearings. We do have a public hearing this morning for the 2025 through 2029 Berry County Parks and Recreation five-year master plan. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anybody who would wish anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the Recreation five-year master plan or opposed to the five-year master plan, now is your time. Commissioner Smoker?
I personally would like to see this postponed until the 7th. I haven't had time to go entirely through it with 160 some pages. So I'm not saying I'm for or against it. I just want more time.
Commissioner Getty, any input on that? I know you had mentioned there might be a timing issue with this as well.
There is a timing issue. Maybe Eric knows the exact date and the process and I think we never want to push up against a deadline like this because there is no flexibility with the DNR on submittable dates. So I think we might have room, but I don't ever like to do it at the last meeting.
Key is, this is your public hearing, so this is one of the requirements of approving a plan. So hold this, receive any comment. You don't have to act on it today. You have to add it into DNR by February 1st. So you can use your first January meeting to approve it and then you'll have plenty of time to submit it to the DNR for.
Okay, so we can continue our public hearing and then we'll have time for input, questions, changes, corrections in the near future if needed.
Yeah, I would definitely encourage you not to cancel or to close the hearing without hearing any comment. That just puts you back behind date on notice and everything again.
Okay. Additional comments for the public hearing for the County Parks and Recreation five-year master plan?
Darrell Cheeseman, Councilor and Township. This plan is very, very important to the way we operate the Parks and Rec Commission. The information in it is what we use for guidance. It's information put together from public input hearings and that sort of thing along with any survey work we can do. So I'm kind of disappointed that we can't keep this moving on the timeline that we set forth, but it's an important document. It's just part of how this process operates. You know, this year, the Parks and Rec Commission had a tremendously successful year. I wasn't involved when the new buildings were being brought out to Sheraton Park or when the museum was built, but outside of that, the work that we've done with accessibility at the park, the work that you folks helped us with with trail improvements and the acquisition of the Metcalf Lake property, this has been a banner year for Parks and Rec. I mean, reading the whole 160-page document, I wish you well if you need to read the whole thing, John. But yeah, it's just a step in the process for how we need to operate and thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Eric Suska, Hope Township. I'm here as a resident, not the administrator. I will say I was impressed with the Parks and Rec Committee. I had a chance to attend. They were very deliberate in their process on this and I will give kudos to the Parks and Rec Committee as their members developed this. This was done in-house, which I can tell you, having done it before, it's not always a fun process. So I think the care which they went through, I'm impressed. So just my comments as a resident. Thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioner Tunisson?
I'm a little bit agreeing with John. If we could just wait till the 7th, I think it'd be that we can go through this and look through the whole thing.
Okay.
Not to postpone it that far, but if Eric says we got till February 1st.
I don't see any reason we can't take it up the first cow in January, giving everybody time to read through this over their Christmas break. Some good reading. Very well thought out document, 160 pages worth. So we appreciate the effort put in by the Parks and Rec Commission. So any additional comments before we close the public hearing?
Rick Moore, Irving Township. I want to thank this board and for all their efforts in making Berry County parks successful. I hope to continue this process. It's been a I'm primarily the bicycle trail guy as we all know, and it's been wonderful what's going on in Nashville and their love of the trail and all of a sudden they have more interest in parks in general. And parks in Berry County are so important because as we get developed by influx from Grand Rapids and so on, it's important to keep our green space. It's important to keep our legacy of beautiful parks in Berry County. And I've always felt that it's very important for city people to have these parks so you don't overdevelop all our farmland into five-acre parcels or two-acre parcels. So city folks can go out on the trail or go to a park and see how wonderful nature is without personally having to destroy it themselves. And so it was comical for me for some times when city people would go down the trail and they'd be terrified by seeing snake skins on the trail where snakes had shed their skin on that asphalt because it's kind of grippy and it works. And they're terrified and I'm thinking, oh, wait a minute. This is probably the first time they were out in the country and they're now they're discovering what's going on out there when they're not there. That birds shed feathers and snakes shed skins and turtles dig holes and that kind of stuff. And they're finally getting out and enjoying the world. And the one beautiful thing about Sheraton Park Board and Commission right now is, like I said back in 2009, we have a tsunami of volunteers who are willing to work hard and to make it successful. And I want to help them in their process and I want to thank this board for all your wonderful help in making these things come true. So I don't see the little clock up there. Evidently I've gone through my time. Thank you very much. When I speak at the podium, Reverend Rick pops out and I just can't shut up. So thank you very much for all you do. I'm Rick Moore, not related to any other boards. And thanks again for all the wonderful things you do, including the things we know about and the things we never hear about because you guys are really busy, not just on Tuesday mornings, and most of us know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Additional public comment for the public hearing on the Parks and Rec Master Plan?
Just asking for a clarification, I guess. So is our intent then to we'll close the public hearing. We've stated that we've already had the public hearing. Is 12F on the agenda, the adoption of this? Would we then withdraw that from the items for consideration and you would reschedule that for a different date? Is that what your intention is?
Yeah, we'll postpone until January 7th, I believe.
That would be the cow.
That would be the cow. Yeah, okay. Will that be enough time, John?
It would be. And I hate to say this, and James Darrell said he'd like to see it move forward. I want to see it move forward also, but there's a couple of things in this agenda that sure looks to me like a winged duck in the state. And this is one of them where you don't get it on a cow, all of a sudden it's there and you vote none. And I don't like that.
Yeah, and it's a combination of not having another meeting this month. So this is our combination.
My thoughts, Honored.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think we should be looking at this and appreciating Commissioner Smoker's position. He's wanting to take the time to make the right decisions and to read the document as long as time's conveniently available that we can get it through on time. I think it's wise of Commissioner Smoker to take that position. Thank you.
Additional comments for our public hearing? Hearing none. We will now close the public hearing on the 2025 through 2029 Berry County Parks and Recreation five-year master plan. Thank you for your comments. Items for consideration, Commissioner Doster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the adoption of the following items for consideration. A, approval to authorize the county administrator to approve claims on December 30th of 2024. Is there support?
Support. Hatfield.
Motion by Doster, support by Hatfield, approval to authorize the county administrator to approve the claims on December 30th, 2024. Is there discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisson?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. I move for the approval of B, approval of the Budget Amendment 24D. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Doster, support by Getty for approval of Budget Amendment 24D. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisson?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. C, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2428 to authorize the auditor to make final year-end transfers. Is there support?
Support. Hatfield.
Motion by Doster, support by Hatfield, for adoption of Resolution 24-28 to authorize the auditor to make final year-end transfers. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisson?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. D, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2429 to authorize the auditor to transfer 2024 general fund surplus funds to various internal service funds. Is there support?
Support. Campbell.
Motion by Doster, support by Campbell, for adoption of Resolution 24-29 to authorize the auditor to transfer 2024 general fund surplus funds to various internal service funds. Discussion?
I got a question. Who makes the decision what funds I'm going to?
Well, we have the four funds.
Yes.
And Eric, we have an allocation formula for those funds?
Yeah.
Will and I looked at the surplus funds and our projected needs over the next few years. I think last year it was 25% to each. This year, we have a major software project coming up that based on discussions is going to far exceed the amount that we had planned in previous years. So we kind of beefed up the data processing fund with 60% of the funds going to that, 10% to 5% to vehicles, 10% to capital, 25% to building area, I believe.
Yes.
So that we just that's our best estimate this time.
Thank you. Additional questions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisson?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. E, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2430, Resolution Approving Fees for Berry County Clerk's Office effective January 1, 2025. Is there support? Smoker. Motion by Doster, support by Smoker, for adoption of Resolution 24-30, a Resolution Approving Fees for the Berry County Clerk's Office effective January 1, 2025. Discussion. I was trying to see the schedule to make sure. I didn't have any objection on any of the other than the price for the, was it the mailing labels for elections, the names of the voter list, the voter list names. It was set, I don't know what the final version turned out to be, but I think we currently charge two cents a name.
Five cents is proposed.
And five cents was the proposed, which is two and a half times that and which seems substantial to me. And I think there's problems that that is a different type of fee than all the other types of fees because it directly reflects who can run a campaign. You know, it's a cost to a campaign and that should be as nominal as possible. It should only be recovering the cost to us. Someone could file a FOIA request for those and you could only charge what it costs us to produce that. And I'm thinking that five cents, even though that may be what other counties are charging, but that's it's it puts a damper on people who want to run for an office and take the exemption, the $1,000 filing exemption. If you think about how many voters there are in the county, what that voting list could look like, say there's 30,000 voters, probably 40,000 voters, means five cents, there's no way you could still maintain a $1,000 exemption for your campaign. And so I, since we're raising all the other ones anyway, it seems like that'd be more than adequate. And I mean, it really is something that should be provided for for free or for what the cost is to us to provide it. Doesn't the Berry County Republican Party has a list that provides it to certain individuals that wish to run, I believe? You have to buy it. You have to buy that. Yeah. Okay. Well, I think that just in the fairness of encouraging people to run for office, that we should have that as low as we can. I would like to keep it at the two cents that we've had it historically. Okay. Commissioner Smoker?
I know. I've ran a few campaigns and from the two cents to five cents, in my way of thinking, is not going to be the difference in the $1,000. The postage will put your way over your $1,000 and not the addresses. And I guess, you know, there's ink and paper and the time done. I don't know if I'd do them for five cents. Just my thoughts. I do not think they should be free.
So how many requests do you get for labels?
We don't get any requests for labels. We have requests for Excel spreadsheets or paper copies of it or they are put on a USB drive. But we do not, we have to supply the USB drive. So we have to cover that cost because we don't want someone's USB from the public coming in and if there's something on it getting into our system. So we use, you know, the brand new ones and then supply them. I have a cost breakdown if you guys want them, what the revenue was from the last two years and then like what the changes were. Do you have any?
Yeah, go ahead.
I went to a conference and I talked to several clerk cohorts and it's anywhere between two and 10 cents per name. A couple counties charge $100 per first name for a list. So what I did was I went and had, what I did was when I had.
Good morning.
I did an average of the counties surrounding us and then it comes similar to our size and just averaged that out for what the cost would be. So what you have there in front of you is per district. So if you were to run for commissioner, you have what the cost would be at two cents, five cents, and 10 cents per name. And then per township, if you needed a copy or if you needed a name list for that, what the cost would be per township. And then 2022 and 2023's revenue to the county are also on that list for you. So that shows you what the revenues were. Off years, it's not going to be, it's going to be more or less than even years, obviously, because we do have campaigns running. So typically four years is where we get a lot more requests. And so it's typically like the county clerk, treasurer, sheriff, Board of Commissioners, those are the people that request the list from the county. We barely have anybody come from the township that get that. A lot of times they get that from their township clerk. So that's pretty much it's just the county officials that request those lists.
Running for a countywide office?
Yes.
Okay. Questions for Sarah?
Well, my feeling is if you're running for office is what you want to put into it, right? I mean, some people put less than $1,000, some people put five, some people put seven. It's all what you want to put into your campaign and the cost.
You know, along the same lines of thinking, I think you're probably not a viable candidate if you're going to try to spend under $1,000 for a countywide election.
It'd be tough. Commissioner Getty?
So you mentioned that you have a flash drive that you for electronic spreadsheets?
Yes.
Any of the electronic? Do you charge for the flash drive?
No, that's included in there.
Included in the cost?
Yes.
And is there a different charge if somebody asks for a printed copy? And does anybody ask for a printed copy?
We had one this year, but that was, you know, several pages long. I think it was like 50 some pages. So typically it is all on the flash. We make it in an Excel spreadsheet so they can make their labels and put it into a letter and do a word format. That's what.
Can you also email the file to them or does it have to be, do you usually, is the flash drive the usual?
We do. A lot of times what happens with the emails is that it's too large for the recipient, so we don't typically email that.
Aye.
I guess I'd also point out that, you know, that fee's not been adjusted since, you know, 2009. So yeah, five cents in today's dollars is a heck of a lot less than two cents was in 2009. So to me, it's not unreasonable.
When someone gets one, say on a flash drive, no one says they can't share that, right?
Correct. What happens when it leaves our office?
They have no control over.
Okay. I appreciate you putting information together for us. Commissioner Doster?
I've run for office 11 times. I've never spent the $1,000. I probably wouldn't have been considered a legitimate candidate. I won four of those races. I would not have run if I had to have put any more of my own money into, into the office. These positions, a lot of them are kind of honorary, especially at the township level, you know, even at a You know, even at a township, look at what it costs to blanket a, a list for just to run for a township position to, to mail to people. Go from like a hundred and 25 dollars to 630 dollars. Those people don't, those people, all that money comes out of their own pocket. They don't have constituents that donate to running for a township trustee. And then I think you still have this problem with the FOIA request. I think that this is a totally FOIABLE, uh, item. And you can only charge what it costs you to produce that list. And I don't see there it costs thousands of dollars for us to produce that list.
Good insight. And I know at the township level, um, a lot of times if you're asking for it electronically or on a simple fee, some of the local township clerks can provide that free of charge.
We've, Mark, in my 16 years here, we have never had anybody from a township level request a list from us. What I just gave you was an example of if you didn't want your entire district, if you wanted just a portion of your district, that's how many constituents was on the list as of last night, was on the list, and that's what the cost would be. But I, I do understand your concern.
And I think in a countywide election also, there are other sources to provide those lists, especially if you're looking for GOP voters or Democratic voters, whatever the case is, that, um, in past campaigns, I've subscribed to some of those at a, at a lot less of a cost to get those, to get that information. You wouldn't have to go to the clerk's office to get that information at that cost.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
From the commissioner's perspective, we, we've doubled up anyway because now we're four years instead of two years. So that two-year increment's not going to happen anyway. So until the fourth year.
He didn't sound real happy about that.
I'm sorry, John, did I mess you up on that? We didn't tell you those are eight years now, Bill. Any other questions for Sarah?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other discussion? Okay. When Madam Clerk is seated, would you please call her in?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Nay.
Gaddy?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. Mr. Chair, it's my understanding the F then has been withdrawn. That's correct. I would move for the postponement of Resolution 24-31, a resolution to adopt the 2025 through 2029 Berry County Parks and Recreation Five-Year Master Plan. Is there support? Motion by Jackson, support by Smoker for adoption, for postponement of adoption of Resolution 24-31, a resolution to adopt the 2025 through 2029 Berry County Parks and Recreation Five-Year Master Plan. Discussion? Were you planning to postpone that to a date certain, to a certain date?
Um, January 7th is the date of our next Cal. So January 7th.
Okay, and that's part of the motion?
I will add that to the motion. I will amend the motion to, um, for the Recreation Five-Year Plan for January 7th, 2025.
Is still supported? Is still supported. Discussion, additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call her in?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Gaddy?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval to accept the resignation of Jim McManus and appoint Jeff Kiesler to serve on the Berry County Land Bank Authority for the remainder of a three-year term that began May 1st of 2023 and ends April 30th, 2025. Motion by Doster, support by Gaddy for approval to accept the resignation of Jim McManus and appoint Jeff Kiesler to serve on the Berry County Land Bank Authority for the remainder of a three-year term that began on May 1st, 2023 and ends on April 30th, 2025. Discussion? Madam Clerk? He has. One more day, so. Madam Clerk, would you call her in?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Gaddy?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. H., I move for the approval to accept the resignation of Jim McManus and appoint Jeff Kiesler to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the remainder of a three-year term that began January 1st of 2024 and ends December 31st of 2026. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Doster, support by Tunisin for approval to accept the resignation of Jim McManus and appoint Jeff Kiesler to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the remainder of the three-year term that began on January 1st, 2024 and ends on December 31st, 2026. Discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call her in?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Gaddy?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. Aye, I approve, I move for the approval of the grant submission to the state of Michigan for the state and local cybersecurity grant program. Is there support? Motion by Doster, support by Smoker for approval of grant submission to the state of Michigan for the state and local cybersecurity grant program. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm asking for your permission to submit said grant. IT Director Ward and I are still working on a few of the items related to the submission, so I'm asking for approval. This is a little different than what's in your packet for up to a hundred and 50,000 dollar grant. We have to match 20% of that, um, which we have in the data processing fund. We are looking at backup solutions. We actually, this is crazy, it sounds like we have over 45 terabytes of data that we have to back up, um, which 45 terabytes is a lot of data, and it's not cheap. So we need to transition to a new platform. We're trying to figure out what's the best one for us. There are a few other opportunities where we're going to improve our, um, it's like I would equate it to antivirus software on steroids. So it protects the system and monitors the system. It tries to help us not be us as in people. We're the biggest problem when it comes to computer networks. So we're looking at those options. So we're spending the last couple of weeks of the year trying to really nail down what I, what we think is the best for Berry County. And thanks to the IT Department for all the work on this. They really have been putting a lot of efforts to safeguard our data and our networks.
Is there a maximum amount of the grant we can request?
No, there's 9.6 million dollars, and we have to total in the state. And we have to submit, we had 20% match in this year's grants. And we basically have to submit a grant for each area that we're interested in. So if it's $70,000 for backup solutions, which is one of the quotes we got, then we're responsible 25, 20% of that. And then if it's $5,000 for cybersecurity awareness training for our employees, then we have to submit, so we can get those separate grants approved. But they have not set a maximum per entity out.
And the initial request in the packet was for 100,000, and this is now 150,000?
I asked for up to 150 because I found out that we could apply for multiple things, um, since this was put in place. So I want to increase our opportunity to at least take care of some of our needs.
Okay. Questions for Eric? Seems pretty cut and dry. Madam Clerk, would you call her in?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Gaddy?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. J., I move for the approval of the attached settlement and release of claims agreement between the county Berry and Sarah Vandenberg, Emily Reed, and Elizabeth Hutton for back pay. Is there support?
Support, Hatfield.
Motion by Doster, support by Hatfield for approval of the attached settlement and release of claims agreements between the county of Berry and Sarah Vandenberg, Emily Reed, and Elizabeth Hutton for back pay. Is there additional discussion?
I have a question. So is this happening all over the state with different counties?
It is happening, um, in multiple counties. I am not aware where everyone is at in the process. Some have dealt with this many years ago, uh, so it's not been an issue. Others, like us, are come, have dealt with it as it came up. As you're aware, we've spent multiple meetings discussing this issue and how we set the chief deputy's pay. Uh, this is the final act of that whole process. With the approval of these agreements and moving forward, we've established the pay, um, process for these positions. We can kind of put this behind us and be on the right side of things. And this is a statutory requirement. This isn't, uh, as you, if you recall, um, when you heard from the attorney, this is something that, it's not a, we can't, we can't avoid this, is what I'm trying to say. This is to pay back an obligation that we should have done when we, that we were hired for this position.
So it's a state statute. This puts us in compliance with the state statute, so going forward, there's no further issues?
Right.
Okay. I know our attorney seemed to be a little slow in conveying this information to us, but luckily it wasn't two or three years from now when they were addressing this, so.
No, and this only goes back to the, this current term that we're in, which is why it's these individuals and not previous. So we, we set the, the bar set each term of the elected official.
Perfect. Questions for Eric? Hearing them. Madam Clerk, would you call her in?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Gaddy?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. Unfinished business we have none, new business we have none. County administrators report.
I do not have much for you. Have a great holidays, everyone. I will be out of the country for the next few days, so, um, I will see you all after Christmas.
Thank you.
Not coming back.
I am coming back.
I said very loud, John, I'm coming back.
I put a tracker on it, we got uncovered, so. Um, Chair Person's report. I had a great couple of weeks off and glad to be back, sorta. Hawaii was wonderful. Vice Chair Person's report?
Uh, I have, uh, I enjoyed your absence. Appreciated everybody's, uh, support of my humble efforts to fill your shoes, so.
I watched him do a fantastic job, so.
Thanks, all right.
Fantastic.
I was fishing for that compliment. Otherwise, Chamber and EDA, uh, board meeting last week. Primary, uh, discussion was, uh, involving their efforts to, uh, substantially increase their annual operating budget through, uh, uh, new revenue from, uh, both corporate and municipal, uh, donors, uh, early, they're in the early stages of that fundraising, but, uh, so far are, you know, appear to be getting some reasonable levels of, uh, of support. They're also proceeding with the, uh, purchase of the old Trumble Agency on, uh, state. Trumble's moving over to the, uh, restaurant, to the old county seat building. That will substantially increase the space available for the, uh, Chamber/EDA operations that they badly need. Also attended the city council meeting and the emergency management, uh, committee meeting. Nothing of significance to report with either of those.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. We did have a moved-up path department meeting last week on the 13th. Commissioner Gaddy and Commissioner Tunisin attended. Was well-received. We did just finalize, uh, and approved the, uh, upcoming contract and stuff for our employees, so very happy that that was taken care of on a timely matter. Uh, also, I went to Johnstone last week where they will have a new trustee in Baltimore. They have two new members, a trustee and treasurer. And on my own personal side, I was a commander of Delta VFW. On the 21st, we have a holiday breakfast at the post. It's 9:00 to 11:00, it's free of charge, donations are appreciated. And on the 28th, we have the famous for the 21st year Shorty's Circus, which sounds a little weird. It's not a circus at all, we have four bands. We have a meal from 5:00 to 7:00, and we're all invited to attend. Always appreciated by all the veterans in the area.
Thank you. Commissioner Tunisin?
Attended Carlton Township, uh, Hastings Charter, and rather than other new board members are getting, uh, I guess they're figuring out what they signed up for. Slowly.
Commissioner Smoker?
Attended Mead Moon. As our director reported, uh, Millville and Hastings Towers are up in the moon. There was a slight setback on the Nashville Tower just by a few days because of inclement weather. And I can't say even whether we had, if I'd climbed it. I wouldn't climb that thing anyway. Uh, and, uh, we're in interviews for emergency management because Mr. Yager is retiring in '25, and, uh, we have some excellent applicants.
Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Gaddy?
Uh, I had, uh, our parks board meeting last week in which we, um, recommended the plan for approval. As you're reading it, um, just remember that, uh, that that document, um, provides our eligibility for DNR grants. We don't, never know what, um, their priorities are going to be, so it is, um, it does include a number of, um, of proposed improvements of which we're not obligated, um, to apply. But if they're not in the document, then we're not eligible to apply for those. So we've been approving these for some time. It's, uh, it's more than a wish list. It's based on, um, really where, you know, where, what we've heard from the public and the commissioner's deliberation. And we're really lucky that we did not have to pay this, this go-around for a planner to prepare that. We had a couple commissioners, um, park commissioners stand up and help prepare that document hours and hours that they put in outside of meetings to do that. So Deb Jensen and, and Doug Klein, um, both spent quite a bit of time helping prepare that. So if there are any questions, certainly reach out to me or to Dan Patton, um, prior to that January meeting.
Awesome. Appreciate the information. Commissioner Carlton?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Doster?
I don't have anything.
Awesome. Let me public comment at this time in the middle of the public wishing to address the board, but do so for up to three minutes.
This your last meeting?
Yes, it is.
You're here for me, I agree with you. I think that's FOIABLE. That information you guys think is FOIABLE. I don't know if we'd wear that in a FOIA suit or not, but, yeah, that is what it is right now. I haven't really been paying attention to the, uh, state uh, state and these, uh, hundreds of laws are starting to, or bills, I should say, they're starting to push through. Uh, I didn't forget about the federal government too right now. They're, uh, changing rules on Medicaid. Uh, so our, our healthcare we've been paying for since we were 16 years old. Um, they're trying to make it, put it into where they do affordable housing, walkable communities. And, uh, in Michigan, they're trying to make it where they do healthy foods. So, uh, again, as, as we're paying attention as we're on the state level, there's a lot of stuff that's pretty bad going on at the federal level too. So let's do our job and, uh, speak for our communities around here and see if we can get some of this stopped. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Additional public comment?
Go ahead. It'll take me a while to get there. Mine's quick. Um, Darrell Cheeseman, Castleton Township. I just would like to clarify the, uh, the park, the county commissioner's intentions, um, for the January 7th meeting. If you were planning on adopting our resolution on the 7th, or if you were planning on recommending to yourself to adopt it later?
Typically, if it goes through a Cal, it also would be, need to be approved final at the BOC.
So you're planning on adopting it the 14th or?
Final adoption on the 14th.
Okay.
Yes?
We have that potential issue on the 7th meeting, which may result in a special, so if you're inclined, we could technically do it at that if you are someone, otherwise we can just, the normal cycle. Your call.
Okay. We'll discuss that and see if we can expedite it. Thank you. Additional public comment?
Larry Bass, Carl Thompson. Uh, a little bit of an update. This is all information to do with what you will. Uh, the two bills, SB 289, SB 300, pertain to a septic inspection, uh, managed by the state, uh, went through committee, uh, on the 12th. They're received in the, in the House on the 13th. So there's probably going to be some action on them this week. Uh, if you would, you know, if you may want to call your rep and say to them, let them know how you feel about it. May not change anything. By the way, if these bills passed, uh, in Berry County, the inspectors as such are going to be, uh, supervised by Bedhead again. So we're going to be right back in the basic, uh, toast analysis, which in my opinion isn't good. Uh, there's been more activity on the national popular vote compact yet. Uh, but our legislators must be getting paid by the job now because of the, on the 12th and the 13th, the House passed 39 laws and the Senate passed 112. So they've been working hard, folks. We should appreciate that.
Scary. Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing done. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Doster?
When I went to, uh, Michael Brown's retirement party, John Hauptman was there and, uh, he stated that there was a, uh, that he, and Jess and people had suggested that there'd be a, a Hall of Fame for county commissioners. And he said, because he had been the chair of, of Berry County and the chair of Kalamazoo County, which, uh, thought to be the only case of, of someone serving as chair in two counties. And then he was like, well, and you, 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 uh, you, uh, served two non-consecutive terms, 32 years apart. That ought to get you, uh, a mention of some sort, um, which I did. And, uh, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. It's a very interesting job that always, never fails to, to perk your interest. It, uh, there's always something new on the horizon. I think I mentioned that, that, I, I said that I'd won four races in my career. Um, one of them, my, probably my favorite, was I used to vote at the Prairieville Fire Barn, and I went to, to vote, and on the ballot it said, choose three of the following, and there was only two candidates, and that was for the Prairieville Parks Board, which is, because they're all elected, they're not appointed, uh, board members. So I wrote my name in, uh, as a candidate, and, uh, I, the county clerk here called me and she said, well, we've got three people who wrote themselves in, each with one vote. And I'm like, well, what are you going to do now? And she goes, well, we're going to have a drawing on the steps of the courthouse. So I showed up to the drawing, and I was the only one who showed, and they had a hat and put the three names in, and she drew out Jack Woods' name. And I'm like, oh, well, I guess that's it for that. And then, uh, I got a call and they determined that there were two Jack Woods who were registered voters in Prairieville Township, and they couldn't determine which one had, had got the, the vote, so they disqualified him. And they had a second drawing, and I won the second drawing. And then from that position, I became the chair of that board, of the, the Parks Board. And then from that, I got appointed to, um, be the deputy supervisor of Prairieville Township. And then I won a race for being the supervisor and served a term of which I was then put on the Berry County Sewer and Water Authority, which I then became chair of that, and then became the administrator of that for 12 years. And I was also doing 25 years of public defender work here in Berry County, and then ran for this position. So I feel like I've had a, a pretty good run. And who knows, if you guys don't behave, maybe 32 more years, I'll be back. I, I will say that, uh, in paying attention to the comings and goings of this board, I think this is one of the best boards that, uh, that we've had maybe in the, in, in the history of, of doing this. I think this is just an extraordinary board, how well it, i- it's able to, to think on its feet and, uh, you know, and have disagreements and work them out and come to a conclusion. And everyone treats everyone with great respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a wonderful career. Commissioner Carlton?
I'm all set.
Mr. Getty?
Thank you, Commissioner Doster, for stepping up and serving.
Commissioner Smoker?
Um, I want to thank Mark also, and especially for your work on the mental health board and getting some of our money back. Thank you.
Commissioner Tunisson?
First, I want to thank Jim McManus. Um, I've had a lot of dealings with him over the years. I wouldn't think I would, but, uh, there've been a few people turned me in for some drywall, maybe on some property, so, uh, and they deemed it egg. So, but I really appreciate everything he's done for Berry County for the past 30 years. And, uh, Mark, it's been a pleasure, seriously. Thanks for your insight on a lot of things, and, uh, I'm really looking forward to what this board can accomplish in the next four years, so. Thanks, everybody.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you. Uh, I too want to send out my appreciation to Jim McManus. We've been here for many years, rolling buses together to the extra special trips for the kids and stuff, so, and school, so, yeah. Kudos to Jim and, uh, special kudos to Mark Doster. One of the things I've found out as a commissioner is I for sure don't know everything, and, uh, it's a continuing, continuing learning process. And, uh, I've always felt the only way you can be a good commissioner is to keep an open mind on everything. And Mark always brings up those things that makes you think twice about what you're doing. And I appreciate that, Commissioner Doster.
Vice Chair Hatfield?
Well, I too want to add my thanks to, uh, Jim McManus, uh, particularly having worked on, uh, a number of economic development projects, uh, alongside him and then serving the last two years on the county planning commission. Uh, Jim has been a, a very valued resource. Yeah, the good news is, is he's not going far, and we'll see him, uh, back, uh, if, if we continue to work with, uh... McKenna. Thank you. He was having a senior moment there, so, uh, so, uh, his experience with us, uh, will certainly not go to, uh, go to waste. And Mark, it's been a real pleasure, you know, serving alongside you, who I, you know, particularly appreciated, not only the work on the mental health, but, uh, some of the background that you have on, uh, our lake level issues, uh, that, uh, you know, is at least very helpful to me. So, thank you, and we, we wish you well. And despite my rude remarks earlier, it's great to have you back, and I've enjoyed working alongside you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And, uh, to follow up on those comments, um, I don't know if Jim is watching this, but Jim has been a good friend, and he has been a great resource for this board and for the entire county and for the townships. Great job of leadership through the solar debate that we had, great job through the gravel ordinance and the issues and the fights we've had trying to maintain our rights here, um, locally. So his 30-plus years at Berry County, he will be missed. Um, just a, a great resource, just a great job, always there, always available to talk to. So people like that are hard to come by. And, um, so Jim, if you're listening to it, thank you from the bottom of my heart. This board appreciates you and everything you've done. And I'm sure, being a Hope Township resident, we will continue to see you. So thank you for your service. Um, and I also wanted to mention, um, as this election, we now have, um, our longtime treasurer, Sue Vanderkay, and registrar of deeds, Barb Horless, are in their final stints as elected officials for the county. And I don't think it can be mentioned enough how valuable Sue and Barb have been to the county, that they've been through some tough times, economic conditions. They've been there through a long time, through thick and thin. Um, they have been a resource for us as well and done a lot of help just as far as guiding and going through some things, setting up land banks, just doing all the things that we have been doing in here, that we've had two very capable, um, people there managing the finances of the county, looking over the county in the registers department and the treasurers department. So, um, to Sue and to Barb, we say thank you for your years of service as well, that I will look forward to meeting them or stopping in the office and saying hi to them. I know that, um, Sue's going to be gone at the end of the week, I believe, so, um, spending some vacation time. So just to think about all the, all the amazing people that make the county work and all the different departments, those are just three of them, um, that I wanted to mention this morning, as well as Commissioner Doster. Um, I'm glad you pointed out, I was going to say 30 years, but it is a rarity. I don't think it's been, uh, repeated in Berry County history, or very many counties where you've got a 32-year stint or you're back in the saddle again. So let's not make it 32 more years. But, uh, I just, um, some of the things that you did, especially as Commissioner Smoker pointed out, really looking at the budgets for, um, the Gull Lake, our Gun Lake, and, um, for community mental health and, and some of the boards you served on, really going into detail on how those boards operate, how the finances are spent, that you brought money available back to the county that we didn't have before. So, I mean, your attention to detail on a lot of things has really proven beneficial for the board. So thank you for your service. Thank you for your eyes and your detail on that type of stuff. Um, I don't have the mind to dig into some of that stuff in the depth that you did, but you certainly got the mind of the attorney in those things and do a very good job. So you'll be missed with those details. We appreciate your service. Thank you, you know? Thank you. And, um, also, my appreciation to Eric and Lurella. You know, I don't know where you're going out of the country, but enjoy yourself. I know, uh, turnover, you know, when you have a retirement, a bike incident, some of that, that it does create some stress in the environment. And Eric, you came in probably not knowing what you're getting into, but we knew Michael had left us in good hands. And having Lurella as an amazing resource for everybody in the county, that we have two fantastic people that we are super excited and confident going forward and leading us into 2025 with U2 Abraham. So we certainly appreciate, um, everything you guys have done. And to my board, I have never seen you so beautiful. So, uh, suits, ties, dressed up, uh, some of you especially, that, uh, I'm like, are you guys getting, are you guys getting married today or what? Between, uh, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Tunisson, I wanted to get a picture with them because we may never see these two with a tie on again. So, uh, get a good, get a good picture of this. Unless you guys are going to wear them Thursday night, then we'll probably appreciate that as well. Um, I will be communicating with each one of you individually on the board assignments for next year. So if you would please take the time to think about the boards that you're on, if there's any changes, corrections, additions, if you feel like you don't have enough work, let me know. We'll set some stuff up for you. Um, also, that we will be going over board rules at our first meeting of the year on January 2nd. So if there's anything, any questions you have on our board rules that you'd like to see adjusted, we have debated them substantially over the last two or three years. So I'm not sure we made a lot of changes or tweaks to them, but please take the time to look through those. Uh, looking forward to the addition of Marcia Bassett. Thanks for coming this morning for, uh, next year's board. And for the first time in the history of Berry County, we have four-year terms. So we don't have to think about elections starting next year, that you can actually have a little mental space. We can all learn and go. We've got several big tasks ahead of us next year, especially looking at the jail and some of the things for the county, um, the front of the court building. There's a lot of things on our list to do. So, um, it's been a great board, been great friendships. Enjoyed working with all of you this year, and we're looking forward to next year. Hope you all have a wonderful and blessed Chris- Christmas, Christmas? Christmas with friends and family. And, uh, I know we'll look forward to seeing you all soon and talking to you soon. So thank you. Thank you to the, uh, Matt, the Podunk Yacht Club, Harvard Master, and for our friends from the Parks and Rec Commission as well for being here today. So thank you and have a happy holiday.